My name is Barb Hedrick. I'm with the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. And welcome to the candidate forum for the Cass County Commission, District Five. We have three candidates in one position open. We'd like to start by thanking the City of Fargo for providing the always lovely City Commission chamber for this and for the staff who are recording this, streaming it both live and recording it for playback on the City of Fargo's government PEG TV channel, TV 56. And the recording will also be available on the League of Women Voters Red River Valley YouTube and Facebook pages, so you can look for it there. Along with the League of Women Voters tonight, our cosponsors are the AARP in North Dakota and Hawthorne Neighborhood Association. And our volunteers tonight include Sandy Seidler, Tiffany Ross, Corey Edgerton, Maureen Johnson, Bailey Stickley. These individuals and organizations make this evening possible. All these sponsors organize these candidate forums, provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. As a League of Women Voters North Dakota president, I now must give my specific pitch on the League of Women Voters, if you don't mind. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League or other sponsors. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media purposes. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. With our friends at the Foreign Communications, the League of Women Voters, once again this year, is putting together what is known as votefor11.org. You will see some handouts about that in the back. This is statewide and has information on candidates answering questions across the state for anything that you might be voting on. This will be going live tomorrow afternoon, I am told. We're very excited about how many candidates have already posted their answers to the questions that are on there. And there is the ability for any remaining candidates who have not done so to please add their answers to the questions. And also to those voters, please check it out and find some answers to at least a few questions, perhaps on some races you are not familiar with, those who are running. It also helps you get a personalized ballot. This is the rules for this evening. Questions have been submitted in advance by the public, either online, or a few have been submitted this evening. I have them here. I will just read them as they are. They are screened for any duplication and to make sure that there is clarity as much as possible. All candidates will be given a chance to answer the questions. We will start tonight with two-minute opening statements from each of the candidates and then go to the questions. And each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions. Even if a question is specifically identified as being directed at one candidate, all candidates will be given a chance to answer. You will see the timer up above the clock there that shows you how much time you have. There's also some lights. Yellow is your warning light. Red's an obnoxious bong goes off. Try to just finish your sentences as quickly as possible. And then we'll move on to the next person. So if everybody is ready, we will start with opening statements. And Keith Gottes, you will begin this evening.
Okay, I'm Keith Gottes, lifelong resident of Cass County. Born and raised on a dairy farm between Mapleton and Castleton. Other than college and grad school at Grand Forks University and a short teaching, a couple of years of teaching in Oregon, I have been a resident of Cass County. Married with, we had three daughters, unfortunately. Sadly, the oldest one passed away four or five years ago. My two other daughters are both involved in the medical profession. One's a nurse at Broadway Hospital in Fargo here. The other one is a pharmacist with Sanford Health System. And Mary, my wife, was a forty-year veteran of the nursing staff at Dakota Hospital and eventually at the Roger Maris Cancer Center. So I've had a long association, our family and myself, of being involved in Cass County. The candidacy of mine is being fueled by, you know, the fact that I am a rural resident out there and longtime board member of the township that I live in, Durbin Township. And I've served in the central Cass School Board for three terms in the 2000 to early 2010s. I've been active in church politics and active in the present-day planning and zoning with the Cass County Commission. So my candidacy, probably I bring that kind of experience to the table.
Now you've shown everybody how obnoxious the dong is. Joel Vettel.
First of all, thank you. And I want to say thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting this event. And thank you for the other two candidates. Your ability to put yourself out there and run for any office is always a tremendous thing, and I applaud you. And so first off, I am Joel Vettel, longtime resident of Fargo and in Cass County. I spent over twenty years in public service, twenty of those in law enforcement. I have a family of my wife, Sandy, and two daughters that are currently, one in high school, one in college, Kennedy and Taren. And I get asked this question a lot, why I'm choosing to serve. And it really dates back to something that my dad said. And my dad was a farmer in a small farmstead in Trail County, North Dakota, and that's where I grew up. And he said something that always stuck with me. And he said, "The best gift that you can give to yourself is to be in service of others." And I've held that true. And I feel that anytime I can help in a variety of ways within our community, whether it's being a leader, a follower, a soldier, a person that's willing to step up and really contribute. And oftentimes, the saying is, "Things get solved by those that show up." I feel that extremely true. And one of the things I've always said that I will do is give back to a community, really an area that I feel passionate about. I feel this is one of the greatest places in the world to raise a family. And I've always said that I want to give back as much as I can and leave it a better place when I leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Johnson.
Also, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Red River Valley for hosting this and the other two. I'm a lifelong resident of Cass County. Went to school in Wapping with, got a degree in egg business. Been married to my wife for thirty-seven years. We have two grown children and, just like Keith's, we had a family setback in December and we lost our son unexpectedly. But have two great-grandkids and have run before, 2016 and 2020. Took second and I really came out really close in 2020. But my issue is, if I get elected, it's not going to be about me anymore. It's going to be about the people of Cass County, we the people. And I believe that when you're a commissioner, I don't care if it's city, county, or what, you're working for the residents, all residents of Cass County. And I want to be a voice for them. I want to, you know, if they're having trouble contacting their other commissioner, I'd welcome to have them come and see me and just all work together. I mean, if you have differences, you leave them at the door and you work with the people that you're working to come up with a good idea or something for Cass County. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start the first question with Joel. What is your number-one concern for the people of Cass County?
You know, one of the things that I've stated since I announced my candidacy is that I really, and I spoke to it earlier, this is one of the best places in the world. I hold that in my heart. This is why I chose to raise my family here. I stayed here because of the quality of life, the things that each and every day, being safe and secure in your homes, providing opportunities for people to grow as individuals, working together to create incredible amenities for our citizens. My service on the park board for twelve years spoke to that. My time in law enforcement spoke to that. And it really speaks to my core issue, is that we are seeing things in our communities that are disappointing. And I think that there's times where we look to, in history, and say, "We've got to take a stand on some of these issues." That's why I think it's important.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, what I'd like, you know, they've been screaming lately for removing property taxes. I can see working to lower them, but we cannot just demolish them because if you ever look at your tax statement, there's a lot of fire departments, schools and everything. And the next question is, where would we get the money there? But at least listen to them and see if they come up with some ideas. Plus, balance out the economical growth. I mean, I know we have three big cities in Cass County, but we have about five middle-sized cities that are growing at rapid paces. And, you know, kind of just equal everything else so everybody gets a slice of the pie. And basically, listen to the voters, the citizens, and work all together.
Thank you. Keith?
I think the biggest concern for me is the growth of Cass County and the, let's call them, challenges and the problems that it's going to come with it, is that it's an economic engine that's being generated. And it brings into play, in order to grow, you've got to have the services provided to draw the workers, the people to it. And like Marty said, that brings in property taxes on the rise. So how to balance those issues, you know, to make it rational? The growth has got so many, you know, things associated with, whether it's taxes or affordable housing, things like that, that the Cass County Commission has really got to be on top of. That's what I think the number-one concern is, the economic growth.
Thank you. For this next question, we'll start with Marty. Social services play a crucial role in supporting vulnerable populations and promoting social equity within our county. How do you plan to strengthen and expand social service programs such as housing assistance, food security initiatives, childcare support, and services for seniors and people with disabilities to ensure that all residents have access to the resources they need to thrive?
Well, it's a loaded question. Thank God, I'm a retired person, so I'm kind of seeing it from a broad perspective of all my life. And yeah, it's a sticky situation because we've gotten a lot of people coming from foreign countries to move here. And daycare is a problem and, you know, you almost have to just lay everything out on the table and then just say, "Okay, we have this much budget to work with. Let's see if we can at least give each something to keep them afloat or even find new revenue that we could add to this and work it out the best we can." I mean, we can't just say we have, we can give a hundred percent to everybody because, you know, unless you've got a crystal ball, it won't work. But at least help everybody somewhere along the line to feel like they're getting something out of it.
Thank you. Keith?
Social services, I'm kind of focusing, the first thing, on, you know, the elderly providing for that in our baby boom generation, retiring, getting older and such. And then the hard thing to realize is that those places out like Good Samaritan out in Arthur and their housing facilities in Buffalo and Tower City, I know for, you know, some of the older people, they don't exist anymore. Because of economies of scale and such, it's forced the consolidation of those services for older people and so that they are going to end up in Fargo. But we have to, you know, provide for the whole. It's all the services across the whole age spectrum is definitely a priority.
Joel?
Certainly. First off, taking care of those in the most need and most vulnerable in our communities is all of our responsibility. At the end of the day, we're a community. I'm often drawn to the statement that a friend of mine used to say, "It takes a village to raise a child." And it's no different with the people that are most vulnerable. And we need to continue to work hard to find those resources to do it. And we, government can't do it all. I'll be honest with you, social services is stretched thin. We know that. We need to continue to find great ways to service that population because they deserve it. And whether it's our elderly, whether it's folks that have other challenges, mental health, a variety of things that are out there. But most importantly, we have to look within. And what are we doing? And I look at some of the great charity works that are done each and every day in our communities, great work with like organizations like Meals on Wheels. Those are the things that are critical for us to succeed.
Thank you. Keith, you get to start the next question. Should public health be a division of the county?
I think that's accurate there. I always believed, in general opinion, as being that the closer that those services are to the people. I'm a strong believer in local, whether it's the school board or, in this case, the public health, it belongs in there. But I realize that it's a, you know, three, the federal government's aspect in the mandates and such, and then the state has then put that responsibility on local government. But it seems to me that the closer it is to the local services, thus the public health belongs with the county.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, I echo that. My service as, currently my employment in healthcare provides me a unique opportunity to see the needs that are out there within health in general. And certainly, when you look at the works they're doing at public health, those are critical. They need to get done and people have a right to that level of healthcare. And I agree it needs to stay local. I agree that it needs to stay where it can be managed in an effective way that really services the community and services the people that really need it. And so having that, you know, eyes on that ball and be able to really connect with the people that they serve is best done at a level where, again, it can be articulated well. So, thank you.
Marty?
Also, I'll agree with the other two people. You've got to keep it to the local government because if it gets to the state or the federal, there's so much red paperwork with time, they dig through it, you never get an answer. And like I said, just see how much is available out there and help the people who really, you know, the public health, they don't have health insurance, most of us do. At least give them a break to take care of themselves, you know, and make sure they're healthy. And like I said, I think it should be done by the county and at least in its local.
Thank you. Joel, we'll start with you with this question. Transparency and community engagement are essential for fostering trust in local government. How do you plan to ensure that county commission decisions are made with, as transparently and inclusively, with opportunities for minimal input and feedback from residents? Additionally, how will you communicate with constituents to keep them informed about county policies, projects, and initiatives?
Thank you. You know, in my work as the Public Information Officer for the Fargo Police Department for eight years, I dealt a lot with the media and was a spokesperson for a large police agency. And one of the things I strive for every day is being as transparent as possible, providing as much critical information as I could to the public because I feel it's truly important. The best thing we can do is inform the folks that need it. And that was sometimes a difficult task because we were dealing with issues that sometimes were very sensitive to our investigations and often sensitive to the families that were involved. But I felt that it was extremely important to make sure people were aware, but more importantly, people were educated in those subject matters. And I feel the county commission is no different. People are smart. They get it. They'll understand it. But they need to be provided the information in a timely fashion, so they make great decisions. And that's the important part. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, I really believe we need transparency countywide and it's been lacking for a few years. But what I really would like to see is, we have our meetings at 3:30 and it's tough for them to do it. Why couldn't we get a program together and have quarterly meetings at different locations about every three months and have the people come and talk to us, you know, for an hour or so? And, you know, and it'd be a pilot program, but at least it would give the residents an extra tool in their tool bag to seeing that we're being transparent with them and hoping to get feedback from the local citizens.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, transparency in government is very, very important. You've got to be honest, above-board, communicate very, very well, and keep the public informed on the issues and what you're thinking. Being a longtime basketball and football coach, I always figured that, you know, I wanted the players, you know, their input. And I think that was pretty important to, you know, success on the athletic fields and such. So transparency and being on board with, you know, the people, very important.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Marty. Mental health is a significant concern for many residents with issues ranging from access to services to destigmatization. How do you plan to address mental health needs within our county, including increasing access to mental health services, supporting mental health education and awareness programs, and collaborating with local organizations to provide comprehensive support for individuals and families?
Well, as commissioners, I'd like to have the people come to some of our means if they're having problems so we can be aware of them upfront and then just do the best we can to get, look at the programs available and help these people with mental health. But also, family members are going to have to come, you know, and support us also. And then we can work as a team to figure out what would be best solutions for each individual or groups.
Thank you. Keith?
The mental health, you know, hits close to home with me that I am a guardian for my cousin. His mother passed away here several years ago and schizophrenic that is, lives in a group foster home in Morehead. I absolutely know the necessary support that's needed from the fam, not just the family, but the community as a whole, is to make his, you know, life as rewarding as it can be. So there's major, you know, amounts of resources that have to be channeled toward, you know, that type of person. And so, close to my heart, the care for provision of mental services.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, mental health is probably one of our biggest issues that we're dealing with in our nation right now. The pandemic through COVID certainly highlighted and exaggerated a lot of those issues within our communities. And being in healthcare and also being a former law enforcement officer, I've seen firsthand the end results, the tragic results of people going untreated. And one of the things we talk about a lot is how do we affect that? How do you affect change in our rural areas? And there are some great programs that we have initiated within healthcare, but more importantly, within communities. And one of those is utilizing technology in our rural areas to actually bring a person, a caregiver, a psychologist, to an active law enforcement scene and have that person talk with somebody. Those are the types of initiatives that are truly, are truly critical to solving this issue.
Next question, we start with Keith. How do you plan to address affordable housing challenges within the county, ensuring that all residents have access to safe and affordable housing options?
I attended a couple of months ago, time, I guess it was last summer, the MetroCog, and that was the main crux of that meeting there. The number of jobs that are going to be brought into Fargo-Morehead at that. And the need for affordable housing was very, very open out there. Also, Fargo's development, you know, really with the diversion, it's developing the challenges of that. And I left there, there has to be rational decisions made, some tough decisions made. They're not only in the hands of the developers, but overall planning of how you're going to deal with, you know, the workforce that's going to come in and provide homes for them.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, when you deal with an issue as broad as dealing with trying to find housing and then also overlap that with issues involving workforce, they seem competing, but they're actually identical issues that we have to handle on a very, very well-thought-out plan. And I think that's where we have to get back to. Where oftentimes, we look for blame in these issues. We look for folks to say, "This is who caused it." Really, we have to come together and find solutions that are going to work for everybody because we know people are coming here to work. We want people to come here to work. And one of the basic needs that they're going to have is housing. And if we don't solve that issue, we don't come up with an active solutions now, it's only going to be, get worse. And when you look at the studies currently right now with workforce, we're not going to have enough people here to do the jobs that we need in twenty years. So we have to continue to take and actively recruit people, but they need housing.
Thank you. Marty?
Housing has always been a problem, but like you said, we have to come up with a solid plan and invite people. And if we're going to invite people to come work in our communities, we have to have a plan in place so it runs smoothly. Is there going to be issues? Yes. You know, but if we can get ahead of this and work as a commission with local housing people and, you know, contractors, maybe we can come up with something suitable that it will work if we just have a solid plan.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Joel, and we're continuing on the housing topic. As housing costs continue to increase, older adults are unable to find housing to meet their needs when seeking to downsize and thus are being pushed out of communities and homes that they lived in for generations. What would you do to ensure the creation of affordable and diverse housing options such as accessory dwelling units, duplexes, courtyard apartments, and townhomes?
Yeah, and again, we get back to that idea that housing is a critical issue, but especially for our seniors. We know that we, as a community, not only is it the right thing to do to keep our elderly in their homes, it is financially responsible as communities to do so. Because if they're there, if they're being cared for through areas like Meals on Wheels, if they're having access to their homes, if they're able to get to medical services through some of the transportation needs that we can provide as a community, that keeps them in their home. And how do we keep them in their home? By making them affordable. You look at those tax incentives that we talked about and trying to, again, incentivize folks, especially our elderly, to stay where they're at, to be comfortable in their own homes that they've lived in their entire lives. And they should never be forced out because of economic reasons and because they're taxed out of it. And that's where we have to look for realistic solutions and incentives to keep them there.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, something like that with elderly, I'd really like to see a program where they can stay in their homes if we can give them breaks on their taxes. You know, they've been paying taxes since they were nineteen, twenty years old, and now when they come to their, have to be forced out of their homes. Or look at some of the towns, what they have to offer for viable housing. to offer for viable housing and stuff like that. But look at all the options before they have to leave their home or, and help them. Because everybody will get that same help as you get to that age. And if it's a workable program, you could have something there for an extra 70, 80 years.
Keith?
This is a situation that has developed in time, a couple of generations ago even, going back to my grandparents, you know, they would, you know, live and die in the same place and such. So now with our changing society and, you know, the workforce and the families, you know, men and women working together, and it's put a lot of pressure on older people. And it, like the other two men up here, it's very, very important to keep older people as comfortable as possible. And that means keeping them in a setting that they're familiar with and such. And so whatever we can do as far as, you know, there's tax incentives there and family responsibility ends in, and try to work with those two things and, you know, keep those people in their more comfortable setting.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Marty. Americans over 65 are the fastest growing segment of the population in the U.S. And research shows that most want to remain in their homes with communities of age. Having access to safe, walkable streets for people of all ages is an important part of that. What would you do to ensure that transportation options are varied, safe, affordable, and user-friendly?
Well, being that age, it is a problem. And do studies and find out what's available. Because like I said, if you're living on the edge of western Cass County and they want to stay in there, we'll have to look at what they have in their, you know, facilities around. And I think the smaller communities, you get volunteers from communities, I know in Kindred, we've offered rides to senior citizens if they need a ride to a doctor or something and, you know, and get them there safely back for it. But like I said, in Fargo too, we're going to have to, or West Fargo, and Horace is big, we'll have to come up with ideas, what we can get safe, reliable companies and see what we can put together for some of these senior citizens.
Thank you. Keith?
Support for public transportation, whether it be the city or the county, very important in this aspect of providing for over 65. My wife is a part of the community of care that is out of Castleton. And Marty referred to it as very rewarding. What they've tried to do is make sure that, you know, keep people in their homes by providing rides to do necessary medical appointments and such. And it has been a very rewarding thing for the people involved in that process. So just overall, public transportation, the community as a whole, charity, you know, should be a priority.
Joel?
You know, it's really, what I've seen and what I've experienced is seniors today are extremely active and far more active than they were in past generations when it comes to being out walking, staying active, staying fit. And we talk a lot about the transportation. And transportation, when you talk about the great things they're doing at Valley Senior Services and other rideshare programs, public transportation, all extremely important. We have to talk about walkable communities within some of our neighborhoods, making sure people are able to get out and really experience that, be able to utilize transportation, bikes, walking. Those are critical issues. I see Arla Preston in the audience, and she's been an advocate for walkable communities in our, in Cass County. And I think that's just as important as talking about rideshare programs, public transportation. We want to make sure people are not only able to get places, they can do it actively.
Thank you. This is, will be the last question. And I kind of like this as a last question because it gives you one minute to answer what is fairly broad stuff that you might have put into what will be a one-minute closing statement. So now we can sort of have a two-minute closing statement, just broken up a little bit. And we start with Keith. What inspired you to run for the county commission and what specific goals do you hope to achieve if elected?
Well, my, I mentioned in my opening statement, the impetus to get involved, you know, came from, you know, support out there in the rural area. And so the, just the overall idea of coordinating between the rural and the city is very important in my mind, is that road systems connect both ways. The farm-to-market, you know, idea out there in the rural area of getting the crop, the produce to the markets also opens avenues to get into the city of Fargo where they do their shopping and attend those kind of events. So the fact is that those services that are provided, you know, the pressure on property taxes, you know, I really think that we've got to have, you know, a fair assessment and make sure that's always in mind, that those property taxes, keep it fair.
Joel?
You know, for me, again, I mentioned service, and I'll continue to mention that. But I do have alternative motives. I have a young family, but my daughters are getting older. And I know they're going to make life choices, where they're going to live, where they're going to raise their families. And I want to make sure this community, this, that Cass County is the best place it can be for them and for their children. Because I truly hope that we can continue the great quality of life that we have in this community. And, you know, I'll get back to that same backbone when it comes to the issue of quality of life. What does it come down to? It comes down to being able to feel safe and secure in your homes, having opportunities each and every day that you can take and find the amenities that you need to feel a great experience each and every day. And also, again, access to healthcare, all those things that we have here, we just need to continue that success.
Thank you, Marty.
Well, I said, like I run in 2016, 2020, and I wasn't going to run this year, but then I started listening to some of the people, and they were just looking for someone that in my neighborhood is, I'm Norwegian, country boy, and I use common sense. And I think if we could bring common sense back to the commission and make it a diverse commission where you have input from outside of Fargo, outside of Horace, and listen to those people and work as a team and, and just work for the betterment of Cass County. We live in the best place, I always said there and said out west is better because it's better hunting. But I said, Cass County is viable. And if we can keep working together as a unit and helping everybody get a slice of the pie, we'll probably have counties asking us what we're doing right.
Thank you, Keith. Oh, wait, we started, did we start with you? We did. Okay. Closing statements begin with Joel.
Well, first off, again, I want to thank everyone for coming. You know, the political process is a difficult one. And the old saying that the two things you don't want to be seen made is sausages and laws is very true. But the work that we do is extremely important. And for me, I want to get down there and really do the work. And I think oftentimes we get caught up in talking points. We get caught up in, in not necessarily the important issues. And really what it comes down to is communicating with people, having active and responsible debate, and then coming up with good common sense decisions each and every time that we look at issues. And for me, it really is personal. I want to make sure that I continue to do all I can to make my home the best place. And so I thank you all for coming tonight. I thank again the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
What I'd really like to do, going on, getting signatures and stuff like that, I ran into a group of 21, 22-year-old people. And they took my picture and they wanted to know what I stood for. And I said, well, first off, I want you guys to come and vote. I want the 30 to 35 people to come and vote. Increase people's voting because those are the futures 30 years from now. And the working class, the retired people, I want everybody to know we have the right to vote and it's your voice, your choice. And let's work together and create a top county that other counties want to come and see what we're doing right.
Thank you. Keith?
I guess I too would thank for the opportunity. It's been 10 years since I retired from my teaching career. And tonight, I'm kind of reminded of that question that come out all of a sudden from a kid and it made you think on your feet. So I thank you for that opportunity to kind of remind me of my teaching career. But I decided to take on the responsibility of, you know, representing, you know, the rural idea there. But I also realize the importance of, you know, what's going on in Fargo-Morehead. Because I've only, you know, my wife worked in Fargo all those years in the hospital settings. So, and that's what I hope to bring with my candidacy is the understanding we're in a partnership together between the rural aspect and what's going on in the metroplex.
Thank you to all the candidates. Thank you to the members of the audience, everybody who wrote questions. Thanks again to our volunteers, our co-sponsors, AARP North Dakota and Hawthorne Neighborhood Association. I remind you all once again about vote411.org. Find out more information about these candidates and others, or contact them directly. Those of you here asked some questions tonight, and I'm sure they've got places you can contact them again later to have as informed voters as possible. I want to finish, as I always do, with a special round of applause to the candidates. Our democracy requires participation, and that participation must begin with those willing to give their time and effort to run for office, even in these times where things are not always so pleasant out there. And I thank you very much for that. I hope you all will join me.